Hi, everybody. It's North Miami City Councilman Scott Galvin here and I want to thank you for joining us on a Sunday evening when you could be doing a lot of different things. But obviously because this topic is so important to everybody in the city of North Miami, I'm glad you've joined us. The shooting of unarmed man about three weeks ago, Charles Kinsey, obviously grabbed national headlines. So that's why we're here tonight, to answer your questions. We're using cutting-edge technology. This is the first time in North Miami's history we've ever used the telephone to reach out to residents, to talk to them about things, and at the same time livestreamed on Facebook to talk about them. So this entire city takes this situation very, very seriously. If you have a question for me, make sure to press zero to ask that question on your keyboard. The city of North Miami turns ninety years old this year, and certainly never before in our city's history have we had to deal with anything of this level of seriousness. So thank you for joining me for this community conversation. Press zero if you want to ask a question, and we'll start hearing what you've got to say.
Again, as Scott said, if you do have a question, don't hesitate to press zero. I know some are getting queued up right now. And press seven, seven on the keypad on your phone if you want to provide us your email address so we can give you email updates about stuff like this. So let's take a question that came in earlier today. Comes into the gym and the question goes like this. What is the status of the FDLE investigation, please?
Sure. I'm proud of our police chief who immediately after this shooting happened, called in the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to take over the investigation. We want to make sure at all steps we're remaining honest and transparent in all that we do. So by bringing in an outside agency to investigate what happened, we obviously maintain that transparency. FDLE immediately took over the investigation after it happened, and we're waiting for them to release some new factual information pretty soon. It might become within the next forty-eight hours. From there, it's going to take about forty-five to sixty days for them to complete their investigation and suggest findings and handing it back to us. So forty-five to sixty days from now is when we expect everything to be wrapped up.
All right. Let's take a question, by the way, for the people just joining us on this call. We still have some more neighbors joining on this call. If you want, please press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone if you do have a question, just like Alton did. Alton, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. What part of the city are you from and what's your question, please?
Did the police officer realize that the caretaker was taking care of a man that was, had the mentality of a four-year-old?
Sure. Obviously, we don't know that yet. That's what the FDLE investigation will help us learn. They're going to interview every officer who was involved, every officer who was on scene, all of the command staff. They're going to be very thorough. So until they come back to us with their findings, we won't know exactly who knew what and when they knew it in the whole, you know, chaos that descended that afternoon.
Let's go with our first survey question that we have. We have some other questions that are coming in. The first survey question of the night goes like this. Should the North Miami Police Department implement body-worn cameras and mounted dash cameras in all police cars? Press one for yes and two for no. Let me ask the question again. Should the North Miami Police Department implement body-worn cameras and mounted dash cameras in all police cars? Press one for yes and two for no. We really appreciate your participation on this. We need to know stuff. So that's what we're trying. We've got about four more of these, so stand by. We're trying to do the best we can on finding out what everybody's thinking. All right. Let's take Laura next, if we can. Laura, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Laura, what part of the city are you from and what's your question, please?
Hi. I am on Golden Boulevard, and my question is, is why if the police union states that the officer was trying to shoot the autistic gentleman, did they handcuff the African-American victim after he had been shot?
Sure. For the first, for the second part of that question, why was the victim, Mr. Kinsey and Mr. Soto, why were both of them handcuffed in the immediate aftermath of the shooting? We don't know. Those are types of things we can offer conjecture. We all probably have a scenario in our head, but we won't know until the FDLE investigation is completed and all of those people involved give sworn statements. So we just don't know yet why handcuffs were brought out. As to why the police union said what they did at a press conference, you'd have to go back to the PBA and Mr. Rivera. We don't know all the lead-up that might have happened for that. That certainly was a surprise to all of us, too. And Colonel, if I might, I want to just say for the folks on Facebook, a few people scrolling questions across the bottom. They can't hear the feed. We've had some audio issues, so if you want to hear the questions as they're being asked, please dial in at 1-888-409-5380. 1-888-409-5380. And if you're listening on the phone right now, you have a question, please press zero. Back to you, Colonel.
I want to remind people, Scott, that that number is toll-free. That 888-409-5380 is a toll-free number, so there are no charges connected with that. Let's review the first survey question we did of the night. The question went like this. Should the North Miami Police Department implement body-worn cameras and mounted dash cameras in all police cars? Ninety-one percent said yes. Your thoughts, Scott?
Well, it means our chief of police is on top of things the way he should be. One of the things in the immediate aftermath that the city did right, and there are several things that we did right that I'm very proud of. One of those things was the police chief laying out a ninety-day plan for the entire department. He laid out four or five things, increased training, more sensitivity, a lot of different things he's planning to do over these next ninety days. One of those things was that all, all, North Miami police officers and command staff will have body cameras and they will all have dashboard cameras beginning in August, which by the clock is just about four hours away. They're going to start putting those in.
All right. Before we take another question, and we've got a ton of them coming in, and that's just great news, because that's why we're doing this call. Let's go with our second survey question. It goes like this. Even before last month's police involvement, involved, rather, shooting incident, do you feel the North Miami Police Department has had a positive relationship with the community? Press one for yes and two for no. Even before last month's police-involved shooting incident, do you feel the North Miami Police Department has had a positive relationship with the community? One is yes and two is no. We'll give you results in a minute. Let's take another caller, if we can. We're going to take Sandra. Sandra, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Sandra, what neighborhood are you from and what's your question, please?
Hello?
Hi, Sandra. Go ahead. What's your question, please?
Yeah, yeah. My question is, is there any other way that, you know, I've been hearing so much about toy guns or something looking like toys. Is there any way we could combat that, that they can check so much, you know, check initially to see if it's, you know, they can go up front and check to make sure that this is, you know, not a real gun or stop the shooting first?
Hi, Sandra. Thanks for the question. Obviously, whether or not the officers on the scene realized that what the gentleman, Mr. Soto, was holding was a toy gun, we won't know for sure until after they give their sworn statements in the investigation. So obviously, it's been all over the media, all over the country, that Mr. Soto, the autistic patient, was holding a toy truck, I believe is what it's described as. We won't know that for sure. One of the things I suggested to the city manager as all this was happening, that we make sure our officers are aware of their surroundings. I don't know whether or not the police knew that there were group homes, ALFs, in that immediate area, but I certainly think all of our officers, especially when they're responding to a crisis, should be aware of the types of businesses and residences that are immediately in that area. So hopefully that's one thing we can work on going forward.
Results from the second survey question. The question was this. Even before last month's police-involved shooting incident, do you feel the North Miami Police Department has had a positive relationship with the community? Seventy-nine percent say yes. Yes to that. Your thoughts, please, Scott?
Our police department has always done a great job with police, community-oriented policing. We have a police athletic league that trains kids in different types of athletic events, boxing, track. We have police officers who attend homeowner meetings and all sorts of community events. So we've always done really well with our community policing.
With that, let's take another live question, if we can. We'll do another survey question right after that. Jose's next. Jose, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Jose, where are you from in the town and what's your question, please?
I'm from Aniston, Alabama, and I wish to congratulate the councilman and all the officials in the city of North Miami for evolving to truth with this shooting, which is something that I believe is exemplary for all the communities in the United States. Please keep it up. My comment, in addition to congratulating the city and its officials, is to backtrack on how this incident started, and please make sure that not all 911 calls are handled as if they are gospel. Most of them are allegations, some of them from anonymous callers. The police officers must not take every 911 call as probable cause or even reasonable suspicion. First responding police officers are required to establish the probable cause through their own direct observations at the scene and interviewing witnesses at the scene, not merely going by, what, a 911 call or a latest over the phone. Also have-
Hold on. Jose, we've got a lot of people behind you. Scott, can you comment what Jose's speaking about, please?
Sure. You know, from the very get-go, the city of North Miami wanted to make this an honest investigation, a transparent investigation of everything that went down. Not even we, no. I was at the gym today. I must have had five different people stop me and say, hey, Scott, what's really happening with the investigation? Honestly, I don't know. FDLE is conducting it, and they're going to tell us what they've learned when they're ready to tell us. In the meantime, we're all just waiting, but anything we can do, like tonight's phone call, to answer questions, to be open in what's happening, to be upfront in what's going on, that's the best that we can do as a city right now. I'm proud of everybody in the city who's doing that.
We are trying to collect a few email addresses so we can provide you email updates from the city. If you do want to get those email updates, we need your email address. Please press seven, seven on the keypad on your phone, seven, if you want to provide us your email address just for that purpose. Let's go with another survey question, if we can. Number three of the night. It goes like this. Do you feel the residents of our city have adequate understanding of the state laws and legal processes that govern the release of information in police-involved shooting? Press one for yes and two for no. Here goes again. Do you feel the residents of our city have adequate understanding of our state laws and legal processes that govern the release of information in police-involved shooting? Press one for yes and two for no. All right. With that, while you're voting, we're going to take Joan next. Joan, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Joan, where are you from in town and what's your question, please?
North Miami Beach. Yes, Scott, this is Joan Curran, and I just-
Joan?
Yes. A long time no see. First of all, I wanted to know how much, why they had the intent to shoot even after the person, one of the people were down on the floor, on the ground like they were supposed to, and didn't hear what the person had, the attendant had to say about being an attendant to this special man, and instead they shot him anyways because of the meaning that-
Joan, what's your question, please? Hold on.
Huh?
What's your question, please?
I'm talking, the question is, why didn't they listen to the person who was attending the other person enough?
Scott, your thoughts?
Sure. Joan, I think that that's something we're going to learn when the FDLE investigation is completed. In the meantime, we can all guess and wonder what the officer heard, what the commander heard, what others on the scene heard, but we won't know exactly who heard what, when they heard it, and what they heard until that investigation is complete. And as I said earlier in the call, it's going to be about forty-five to sixty days, the FDLE tells us, before that investigation is done.
The results of our third survey question. The question, first of all, went like this. Do you feel the residents of our city have adequate understanding of state laws and legal processes that govern the release of information in police-involved shootings? No, eighty-eight percent. Your thoughts, Scott?
Well, that doesn't surprise me either, because so often, many of the people in the community, they're busy working. They're busy going about their own business. They don't slow down long enough to know how a police investigation would be conducted. They don't know the process. They don't know the timeline that plays into it. We all, you know, we're used to watching television shows where, like Law &amp; Order SVU, the crime is solved within a sixty-minute period. And here in today's internet world, everybody is wanting quick information. Unfortunately, the law enforcement investigation process isn't going to be as quick as we might like it, but we'll know something in forty-five to sixty days.
Let's take Monique next, if we can. Monique, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Monique, where are you from in town and what's your question, please?
Hi. I'm from the Golden Glaze area in Miami, and my question is, how does the police department, which is the North Miami Police Department, plan to build the trust and the relationship amongst us people? I'm an African-American woman. I go get up. I work every day. And for me, I am a bit afraid. I have family members, and how do you guys plan on building trust?
Well, we're going to have to double up on our community outreach efforts. We're going to have to take more time to talk to residents. You're listening to this Telephone Town Hall meeting, and for those of you on Facebook watching it, I bet you this won't be the last one that the city of North Miami conducts, the last one of these virtual town hall meetings. We're going to have to do a lot of communication. Chief Eugene, Gary Eugene, who, by the way, had just started in his position one week before this shooting happened. Commander Eugene has already told us that he is going to implement autism awareness training for all of our first responders and crisis intervention training. So we're going to have to sort of almost start from scratch to rebuild our trust in the community.
All right. I'm right here. Go ahead. Do you have something else to say, Scott, or I interrupt you?
Sure. No, no. I was going to jump in and say again, for those of you watching on Facebook, I see some of the scrolling comments. Please call in if you want to hear the questions live at 888-409-5380. And if you're on the phone and you have a question for me, please press zero to ask that question.
All right. Let's go with our next survey question, four out of the five that we're doing tonight. The question is, it's very important to answer these, so if you don't mind pressing one or two, that'd be great. Here goes. Are you, as a resident, comfortable with the level of transparency the city has in place to share the information and feedback in the aftermath of the police-involved shooting incident? Press one for yes and press two for no. The question one more time is, are you, as a resident, resident, rather, comfortable with the level of transparency the city has in place to share information and feedback in the aftermath of the police-involved shooting incident? One is yes and two is no. We appreciate your voting. That's really great of you. Okay. We're going to take Deborah next. Deborah, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Deborah, where are you, neighborhood-wise, and what's your question, please?
I'm on the west side of North Miami, and I'd like to know, and it seems as if, you know, you probably won't be able to answer the question, because I was listening to the other question, you know, how could a 911 call saying that someone was threatening suicide end up in a completely opposite direction?
Yeah. Obviously, I wasn't privy to that call. I've not heard its full recording released. When people call in and they see something on the street, they're usually agitated. They're scared themselves. So why a resident thought they saw somebody trying to commit suicide and it was only a toy truck, I can't begin to speak factually to that. But again, I think that's something that the FDLE investigation will finally answer for us when it comes out.
Our results of our fourth, rather, polling ques-, survey question, rather, goes like this. Here's the question. Are you, as a resident, comfortable with the level of transparency the city has in place to share information and feedback in the aftermath of the police-involved shooting incident? Sixty-nine percent say yes. Scott, your thoughts?
It was the right thing to do, to ask FDLE to come in and take over. Anybody who's been following a lot of the headlines here in North Miami over the last five years knows that we have not always been a honest and open city. We've not done our best to deal with the media and deal with the public forthrightly. We have a new city management team in place. We have a new city manager, new city attorney, a new police chief, council that's relatively new. It's a new day in North Miami, and no doubt going forward, you're going to see more open and transparent discussions like you're hearing tonight.
One last plea. If you do have a question, please press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone. Won't bring it up again to do so. We do have people in line waiting to ask questions, but there is one more ask. If you do want to ask a question, press zero. If you want to provide us your email address for email updates, press seven to do that. Seven, so we can get your email address and send you those updates. Zero for questions, seven for email updates. And Carol is next. Carol, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Carol, what neighborhood are you from and what's your question, please?
Okay, espero un momento. Hello, how are you?
Good, Carol. Hi.
Hi. I'm from the North Miami area, and I'm very glad to be participating in this town meeting. I'm surprised, but I grasp this town, this new technology works really well for me. My question is very simple. How come the caretaker wasn't identified by a jacket or some distinguished vest that would let police officers and other people, for that matter, know that he was a caretaker? That way, we could have, you know, we could have rationalized that he was in possession of a person that was disabled, and that would have, you know, made him a sore thumb in the group. He would have been able to identify it a lot quicker. I thought that-
That's actually a really good question. I've never even heard somebody pose that before. So rest assured, I'm going to pass that along to some of the people I know in the ALF world. You know, why weren't, why wasn't the employee wearing some sort of ID or vest or something like that? I truly don't know, but that's a really, really good question. I thank you for posing it.
And let's do our final survey question of the night, if we can squeeze it in here. Would you like to see more Telephone Town Hall meetings just like this one in coming months on community issues? Press one for yes and two for no. Would you like to have us call you and do another one of these? Press one for yes and two for no. We appreciate your participation. Voting on that. Let's take, I hope I say this name right. Alpiz, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Where are you from? What's your question, please?
Hello. I'm from the North Miami area. My question is, are there any steps taken by the North Miami Police Department to prevent similar situations from happening again? Much to judgment, without having, or certain that the person was a threat. And I do also like to question the person before me posing, I think some sort of professional etiquette should have followed with the guy to understand that would maybe identify him as a caretaker. That's a nice question also. You'll tell me.
Yes. Our city attorney, excuse me, our city manager very quickly convened a community council to discuss with the community things that we might do better. You know, a lot of what North Miami is going to have to do right now to get better is listen. We need to hear from you and get your feedback and ideas. And the community council that's recently been instituted is going to be one way that we do that. Additionally, as I mentioned earlier in the call, Police Chief Eugene is already going to up our accreditation standards, increase them, make them stronger. He is going to implement autism awareness training for first responders, and he's going to make sure that every officer on the force has crisis intervention training through the county. So we're going to do a lot of things. That's just the beginning. We're going to do a lot of things to make sure the city is better. If you're on the phone and you have a question, please make sure you press zero to ask that question. And I see a lot of people on Facebook who want to tune in. The phone number directly, toll-free, 888-409-5380. 888-409-5380. And I saw a question goodbye, interestingly enough, on Facebook a moment ago from Darrell. Darrell wanted to say that he thinks that 911 callers should be held responsible for their content of their calls when they call 911, to maybe cut down on bad information. So thank you for posting that thought on Facebook, Darrell.
Results of the last survey question. Would you like to see more of these Telephone Town Halls in the coming months on community issues? Ninety-six percent of people said yes. Your thoughts, Scott?
Technology is a wonderful thing. Obviously, we at the city of North Miami need to do more to take advantage of it, whether we're tweeting, whether we're posting on Facebook, whether we're making Telephone Town Halls. All of that needs to be something that gives people the avenue to express their opinion like everybody's doing tonight.
Let's take Tamara next, if we can. Tamara, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Tamara, what neighborhood are you from? What's your question, please?
Hi, good evening. I'm from the Breeze, Weppe State area. My question in regards to the police department in North Miami is, why is there such a us-against-them mentality in their dealings with the community?
Well, earlier in the call, we asked everybody whether they felt comfortable with the city of North Miami's performance up until this moment. I think it was sixty-five percent did. So in a greater sense, I think the city of North Miami Police Department enjoys a very, very robust, a very healthy relationship with the community. And let's not forget, we need to thank those police officers, because the day that this went down and every day since, men and women of this North Miami Police Department have been bravely patrolling our city and just were right on top of things to make sure, when there were protests at the police department, our officers were bringing out water. We were doing a lot to make sure that cooler heads prevailed. So I think a lot of the things that the city of North Miami does are great in an overall sense across the country. I certainly recognize that there are people who, you know, are maybe going to be distrustful of law enforcement no matter what. So we'll always do our best to, you know, to answer those types of things. If you have a question you're not going to, you might not get to tonight, because I see we're starting to run late on time, make sure you email your comments to comments@northmiamifl.gov. That's email your comment to comments@northmiamifl.gov. And if you have a phone question you want to leave, we have a comment line set up for you at 305-902-6745. That's 305-902-6745.
But don't jump off yet. We've got some more time. So let's take Emma next, if we can. Emma, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Emma, what neighborhood are you from and what's your question, please?
Westlaw River. My question is, why did the officer say that he didn't mean to shoot the black guy, but he was shooting at the young man?
Yes. Sure. Thanks, Emma. We're still waiting to find that out ourselves. We don't know who said what to whom and at what moment it was said. The Florida Department of Law Enforcement is investigating this situation. They're going to have to, on the record, interview everybody who was involved, and that's when we're going to learn a little bit more factually what was said at that scene.
Let's take, let's just keep cooking through questions, if we can. Here, Julian's next. Julian, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Julian, what neighborhood are you from and what's your question?
Yes, I'm a Miami Guardian, and I'm just curious, especially with what Emma just brought up, that this person that was shot was a patient under the care of the Florida Department of Health. I'm curious if the Florida Department of Health is conducting a motion for patient endangerment.
If there is a separate investigation from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, I'm not aware of it. So is it possible, I guess, but I haven't heard anything from any city administrators that there is something like that going on. Also, again, if you want to ask a question and you're on hold right now, please press zero. And Julian, thank you for that phone call.
Let's take Richard Dix, if we can. Richard, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Richard, where are you from, neighborhood-wise, and what's your question, please?
Yeah, I'm from San Souci Boulevard. And first, I want to say that the North Miami Police, I've been here fifteen years, and they're wonderful. But my question is, is there a better way to train the police to meet situations like this? On the surface of things, it sounded as if there should have been better training of the officer who used his gun.
Sure. And I assume you might mean from the standpoint of how to use the gun? Is that, is that an accurate, Richard, or an accurate reflection of the question you're asking?
No, I mean more. He should have been able to read the situation a little better to realize that it was not a situation that required the use of a gun. And is there some training that's going to be, take place that will help to solve that issue?
Sure. Yes. That answer is yes. And it ties right into a question I'm seeing on Facebook right now from Gabriella. She mentions that Judge Steve Leifman has a crisis intervention training program that he spearheaded. We have already been in touch with the judge. I actually spoke to him as he was flying out to Los Angeles one day last week. We are going to make sure that all of our North Miami police officers going forward take that crisis intervention training, hopefully to head off a situation like this.
Let's keep plowing through questions. Let's take Rudy next, if we can. Rudy, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Rudy, where are you from? What's your question, please?
Yeah, I'm originally from North Miami. Scott, Rudy Herrera. How you doing, sir?
Hey, Rudy.
Well, I give you a lot of credit and courage. It's the first time I've seen, you know, what I do for- what I do for a career. Over thirty years, I've never seen copsmen step up forward like you have done, and, uh, put yourself out there for these people and give them honest answers. My quest, my question was, and I think I know the answer is, why was it a rush for it? They could have held back and taken more time. That's the only N I C shirt that the officer should have done.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm really interested myself to hear what the FDLE signs. I, just as a person, I have a hundred questions about what happened that day. Why did things play out the way they did? Is there something that, that went wrong? What could have been done better? Yeah, I just don't know. So, until that report is released, uh, I, I don't want to guess too much. Um, and, and reaching out to a couple of other Facebook questions I see coming across, uh, Clint Bauer wants to make sure that we point out, obviously, that somebody with intellectual disabilities is different from somebody who's mentally ill, and, uh, Mr. Soto, uh, who's autistic, has an intellectual disability and is not mentally ill.
Let's take Fabian next, if we can. Fabian, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Fabian, where are you from? Neighborhood wise? What's your question?
I'm from the west side of North Miami. Um, I got two questions, really. One is, um, do you believe the situation could have been resolved by the professional with less police involvement? 'Cause the whole reason why he couldn't really handle the, the guy, in my opinion, is because he had the police on him. So, if they pulled back a little bit, could he have been able to, would, would he have been allowed to take care of the situation? And part two is, I've seen police directly go for their gun for offenses that could have been handled with less force. Why is it other methods weren't taken to subdue other than shooting? Um, we have money for new chargers and paint, but we don't have, um, any other tactical equipment to disarm individuals?
Sure, and I, that's one of the questions that I have, Fabian, that I just don't know exactly. You know, were, were the officers on scene armed with a taser? Could a taser have been used in this instance? That's a personal Scott Galvin question I have, but again, until FDLE interviews everybody involved and, and gets that type of detail, we won't know for sure. Rest assured, once that report is released, we're gonna double back and, you know, come up with every possible solution, sure of what really happened that we possibly could. Uh, and I'm being reminded, by the way, to press zero if you're on the phone and you want to, uh, ask a question. For those of you watching live on Facebook, if you can't hear the audio right now, call in on the phone, and you'll hear it live at eight-eight-eight-four-zero-nine-five-three-eight-zero.
And that is a toll-free number, so don't hesitate to dial it away. If you're having trouble hearing on Facebook, okay, let's take Sarah next. Sarah, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Sarah, what neighborhood are you from? What's your question, please?
Um, I live in North Miami, on North East one-hundred-twentieth Street.
All right, I'm gonna read her question, 'cause she's got one heck of an echo in the background, 'cause she's probably got a cellphone on. Heard the officer who shot was on leave. Is he receiving pay? And is he getting an eye examination? Scott, your thoughts?
Officer Alada, who is the person who has been identified as the officer who pulled the trigger, uh, he is on administrative leave with pay. His commanding officer, Emile Holland, is on leave without pay. So, there are two officers who've been identified as, uh, immediately participant in this situation. Officer Alada on leave with pay, Commander Holland on leave without pay.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's get, I gotta, I gotta get this dialed up, my next question. I apologize for being a little tardy here. Jenny's next. Jenny, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Jenny, what neighborhood are you from?
Hey, Scott, this is Jenny.
Hi, Jenny.
I just want to say to, uh, we're all pretty new here. I've lived in North Miami for a long time, a lot of people have, and you, even I did not know that there were those songs up there about the good points, Scott. And I just wanna, I don't know whether it has anything to do with vulnerability or anything like that, but that's a good point. And also, I want to tell anybody that's listening that I don't know everybody involved in the city government anymore, because everything has changed a lot, which is good sometimes, and we just all have to listen to each other and learn. But I want to tell anybody that, for what it's worth, that Scott is the most transparent, honest person that I've ever met as a, as associated with politics. So, that's, that's, that's that, Scott.
Thank you, Jenny. You know, it's funny, Jenny, uh, the owner of the president of the, the ALF in question, and myself, all live within about five blocks of each other, and we all live within about five blocks of where the shooting happened. So, it's really interesting, uh, to start to learn how many different types of residential facilities might be in our area. Uh, like I said at the top of the call, it's something that our police officers certainly should be aware of as well.
Let's take Angela next, if we can. Angela, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Angela, what neighborhood are you from? What's your question, please?
Well, I'm actually from Alabama as well, I've just been following this. Uh, my question is, how does, how do they, how do they automatically, or why do they automatically pull their weapons when someone is, uh, someone, like the caller called it, their nine-one-one caller said, and they're attempting to commit suicide? Why would you not speak to that person and try to talk them down instead of, or as opposed to shooting them?
Scott? Thank you, Angela. Yeah, obviously, exactly what happened and exactly what was said on that scene, we'll learn when FDLE can, can, you know, convenes their investigation, completes their investigation. Um, if, if one of the officers was in fear for somebody's life, I could see why they might have pulled the trigger. Did they really fear for that in this instance? You know, I don't know. It's all conjecture until such time as FDLE interviews everybody who participated.
Let's take Gary next, if we can. Gary, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Gary?
Hey, this is Gary. I'm from the west side of North Miami. My question is, is the city under some type of pressure to hire, specifically the Police Department, to hire, to hire or promote people from the, within the Police Department based on their ethnicity versus their qualification?
That's a really good question, Gary. Obviously, as a councilman, I'm not privy to the behind-the-scenes things that go on, um, when it comes to hiring and promoting police officers. Have I heard some of those same rumors? Yes, but nothing before this moment has called such a those situations into question. So, you know, we'll just have to wait and see. Again, FDLE, an independent police body, will conduct totally, totally thorough investigations of this. They're not, they're not beholden to any of us. They're not beholden to any of the politicians. They don't have to answer to the Chief of Police to keep their job. So, if this investigation goes down a particular path, it will be very, very interesting to see what's at the end of that path.
Jim's next. Jim, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Jim, what neighborhood are you from? And what's your question, please?
Jim lives on the east side of town, and Jim has been asking, why do we have to bring in outsiders to be Police Chiefs here? So that, can't we pick somebody from the department, make him the Chief of Police? He's equipped, he knows the officers, he knows who's who, and he knows these people of North Miami, and he, he better knows how to handle these things. I believe the North Miami Police do a fine job, but I also know that there's a lot of interference. Uh, we go through Police Chiefs, I can't, I can't believe it. Hence-
Okay, what do you think about what Jim's commenting about, please, Scott?
Sure, thank you, Jim. Jim, to Chief Eugene's credit, he was on the North Miami Police Force prior to this happening, and was actually promoted from within, uh, though the position was advertised. Uh, City Manager Larry Spring, who makes the decision on whom to hire as a Police Chief, chose to promote from within and promote, uh, Gary Eugene to Police Chief. Uh, I'm seeing a few people on the Facebook feed, again, say they can't hear anything. Well, make sure you call in, and you can hear the questions being asked of me live. We ran into a little bit of an audio glitch right as we were going live with this. Uh, so please call in to eight-eight-eight-four-zero-nine-five-three-eight-zero, if you're on Facebook and want to hear the calls, and if you're holding on the line right now and you want to ask a question, please press zero.
Deborah's up. Deborah, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Deborah, what's your neighborhood? And what's your question, please?
Hello, my name is Deborah. I live about two blocks from where the police shooting happened. I was actually away, and, um, I had people getting in touch with me. People were scared that I was in Europe, but actually, I feel like I was safer in Europe than here. I have seen so much, I, I have to say, I'm a white, middle-aged woman, which has given me, um, more of a space to speak up when I see the police officers doing horrible things. Across the street from my house, in these apartments, just by W.J. Bryan, there was a huge SWAT team in the middle of the day with kids getting out of school. Whenever I tried to video these police, um, they scream at me and tell me they're gonna arrest me. They need to really understand that we are legally allowed to video them doing things, um, that, um, you know, in the course of their work. So, my concern is that the North Miami Police have military equipment that has been being given out to police, um, all over the country, and I'd like to know if the North Miami Police have the, um, military, um, capabilities.
Scott, your thoughts?
Sure, um, and Deborah, I want to say this to you. If any police officer in the future tells you, shouts at you, and says you don't have the right to film them, I'm in the phone book. Call me or email me. If you register by pressing seven right now to give me your email address, let me know next time that happens. I'll immediately follow up. If you're ever witness to any types of crime, please make sure that you file a police report. And again, if you have comments that you want to, you know, leave for us tonight that you, we don't get to, call into our phone comment line at three oh five nine zero two six seven four five, uh, or email, uh, comments@northmiamifl.gov.
Carol's next. Carol, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Carol, go ahead with your question, please.
Uh, yes, um, truthful. One, I wanted to know if there will be additional training for the dispatch officers. Um, I think that's some, uh, what, uh, critical, um, terms of information that's going on to the officers on the call. So, I think, uh, looking at further training for dispatch is important. Uh, I'd like to know if that's gonna happen. And the second question is, and perhaps it's already been answered, but is there a citywide registry of all the existing police facilities in the city and the type of clientele, um, that are in these facilities, so that the Police Department knows when they're responding to an incident in an area of one of these facilities that they might, uh, consider, um, the possibility that something is, is connected to that?
Sure. Thanks for the call, Carol. Yes, for the first part, um, all police staff will go through the crisis intervention training, uh, so everybody, whether they're civilian or sworn police, everybody will have to go through, uh, those types of updated, uh, training. And then for the registry of the ALF, that answer is no. But, uh, I, I, as I said at the top of the call, one of the things I've already suggested to our city manager is we make sure that our police staff are more aware of their surroundings when responding to a crisis. Uh, is there a school in the area? Is there an ALF in the area? Uh, you know, who are, who are the people that are immediately in that vicinity? I've been highly critical of our civilian staff at City Hall, not the police staff, but the civilian staff at City Hall, uh, that you can sometimes tell what time it is, even if you don't have a watch, 'cause when five P M rolls around, there's a mad scramble for them to leave City Hall and head out. They don't have a connection to the community so often, 'cause we need to reestablish, uh, the community connection between all city staff, police staff, and the community.
Let's take another question, if we can. It's Philip. Philip, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Philip, uh, go ahead with your question, please.
Uh, hi, my name is Philip. I have actually lived in the city of North Miami, uh, Bree Swift area, since nineteen sixty-one, and needless to say, I've, uh, seen a lot of changes. As far as this particular incident is concerned, I think we can speculate and speculate and speculate, but we're not gonna know anything truly until that report is in from the FDLE or what other, whatever agencies, uh, will be also making a report. Uh, so right now, it's, it's not gonna come out good either way, but we have to wait and find out. America, we like everything instant, but you can't have an instant investigation. One of the problems I have is what was mentioned just a second ago, is with dispatch. Uh, you very often will get them on, and they'll tell you, uh, there's nothing we can do about this. They won't connect you to, uh, an officer higher up. For instance, uh, code enforcement is run by the Police Department, and we are told from City Hall that if you see something going on on the weekend, call the Police Department. I've done-
Okay. Your thoughts, Scott?
Sure, obviously, if you're calling nine-one-one to report an incident, that goes through the county's dispatch office. So, if you're saying, uh, you're calling nine-one-one, and they refuse to give you to somebody else, it's because they're not even in the city of North Miami. They're relaying the calls. If you want faster response, always call three oh five eight-nine-one-eight-one-one, the direct line to the Police Department here. Now, if you're still running into, uh, problems there, it could be any number of circumstances. If you're calling to, uh, uh, report a crime that's actually in progress, you're, you're watching a mugging or something like that, that will take priority over a car accident that might have just happened outside of your house. Uh, depending on the number of, uh, problems they're addressing at that given moment will depend on how quickly they're able to respond.
Nancy's next. Nancy, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Nancy, go ahead, please.
I, I just want to say that I am so proud of our city officials' response and commitment. You should be a model for the rest of our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. You know, it, it's ironic, and again, ninety years of North Miami history, no city council, no city administration has had to deal with a national event of this magnitude. We have one opportunity to get it right. Let's hope we're setting the game plan for doing that.
Stephanie's next. Stephanie, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Stephanie, please go ahead with your question.
Hey, Scott, it's Stephanie. How are you?
How are you, Stephanie?
Hi, I'm good, I'm good. I want to ask you a question, and I'm, I don't even know if you can answer this, but why is there no, uh, question being asked about the SWAT team marksman, Jonathan Alada, why he shot, number one? I mean, he's supposed to be trained, and it doesn't appear that his life or the life of anybody else was in danger. And why isn't anybody questioning his training as far as, not only did he take a shot that at this point appears to be unnecessary, but then followed up with two shots, and then he missed? He missed altogether. So, I'm just wondering, is that, is that a question that is on anybody's mind?
It's on everybody's mind. That question's on everybody's mind. But again, with FDLE, uh, taking over the duties of the investigation, we won't know for sure why Officer Alada shot three times. We won't know for sure what was going through his mind. We don't, we'll know for sure, uh, all of the circumstances that surround the situation. So, that's why I'd actually thrilled FDLE jumped in, because that way it gives, uh, North Miamians faith that the investigation will be done in impartial and a transparent method. But yeah, we're gonna circle back to all of those things.
Richard's next. Richard, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Richard, please go ahead with your question.
Yeah, hi, how are you? Uh, what, what disturbed me most was, we have a, a new officer that was just promoted a week before this happened. Uh, he was giving bad information on the scene, and then said he wasn't on the scene. Uh, certainly, he's not truthful. I was wondering what the city planned to do with him? Do they plan on keeping him as an employee, or are they gonna let him go?
Obviously, if, uh, that, that's why the commander is on leave without pay. City administration has already made it publicly known that that commander gave misleading, that misleading information to investigators over him who were looking at this situation in the immediate aftermath. Uh, if that turns out to be the case, obviously, that's not something the City of North Miami is gonna tolerate within its department, but we have to wait for the FDLE to give us a full picture of what transpired. Uh, so Officer Alada is on leave with pay, Commander Holland on leave without pay. And I'm being reminded again to tell you to press zero, uh, if you're on the line now and you have a question you want to ask. We're down to about the last ten minutes of the phone call, um, and make sure, of course, if you want to listen in from Facebook, you dial eight-eight-eight-four-zero-nine-five-three-eight-zero.
By the way, Philip called back, and he was angry that it was assumed that he called nine-one-one, didn't call the regular number, since the response time has actually gotten worse. I just thought I'd bring that up. Scott, your thoughts on that?
Sure, no, thanks for clarifying. I didn't know in real time which you had called, obviously. I bet you just about everybody at the Police Department is listening to this call tonight too, so they'll probably get the message that we need to work to, uh, handle our response too, so they'll probably get the message that we need to work to, uh, handle our response time a bit better. We've got a lot of work to do at our department, but we're gonna get it done.
Marilyn's next. Marilyn, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Marilyn, please go ahead with your question.
Hi, uh, I just got to know, after the police officers saw that the intended victim had this object in his hand, how long should have been before they could determine whether it was an object that was, uh, that would hurt them, or if it was a toy? Twenty seconds? Thirty seconds? A minute? Two minutes? How long should have been before they could make that determination?
With today's modern technology, binoculars, scopes on rifles, multiple officers on scene, I would think that would be something that was immediately assessed. What went wrong? We won't know until that FDLE investigation comes back. So, you know, everybody's got a thousand questions. We're just gonna have to be patient as FDLE does its work and, and brings us back some hard and fast answers. If you're on the line, you have a question you want to ask, please press zero.
All right, um, I think we're pretty much, uh, wrapping up, actually, to be honest with you. We've got about as many questions in as we can, because we're running out of our lot of time, Scott. So, um, if you didn't get your question in, whether we got to you or not, or whether you pressed zero or not, leave us a message also. You can do that at the end of one of these calls. Day of the end, leave us that message. If you want us to get back to you, we gotta have some contact information, such as your name, phone number, and/or email address. So, give us that contact information, so we have a fighting chance of getting back to you. But stay tuned for the call for that message. Uh, these, uh, these voicemails will have readied and probably get back to you within the next couple of days if we possibly can. Okay, Scott, if you wouldn't mind, please, bring us to the finish line.
Sure, uh, you know, I really appreciate everybody taking the time to be here tonight. Uh, we're testing new tech, new technology and, uh, doing our best to reach out to the community. We have to keep those lines of communication open. That's the only way we're gonna grow as a community and get better. I was asking to lead up to this, why are you gonna even bother stepping into this hot arena and take your question? I mean, I have no idea what people are gonna ask me heading into tonight. Uh, why take the risk? And in reality, it's because that's what a mature community should do. Have conversations about difficult issues like this. Uh, it's easy to be a councilman if all you do is go to chicken dinners and attend ribbon cuttings. Uh, I was supposed to be on vacation this last week, and I mixed that to make sure that I was here to help deal with this situation. This is my hometown. North Miami is where I have always lived, so I have a great, great commitment to seeing that we do things honestly, transparently, and thoroughly. So, thank you to everybody who is here for this community discussion tonight. Uh, if you have questions going forward, make sure you, uh, call the city's hotline at three oh five nine zero two six seven four five, or you email comments@northmiamifl.gov. I think we're getting another call from Lorraine.
Um, okay, I'll take Lorraine, then we'll wrap up after that. Lorraine, go ahead with your question, if you would, please.
Hi, I, I, I was, um, listening to you speak about the FDLE, uh, taking over and investigating this case. I, I just have a question, you know, since the concern is, it's like the police, police and the police. Who's FDLE comprised of, and are there citizens on, uh, a, a partisan board? Are, are the citizens chosen to be a part-
Okay, who makes up the FDLE, please, Scott?
Sure, thanks, Lorraine. Florida Department of Law Enforcement is what FDLE stands for, and they are state police officers, sort of like the Highway Patrol, except they're more of the investigative arm than the Street Patrol. So, are they police policing police?